Truly unbeatable. Sandy has been such an asset to her special ed department since the school's opening. Sandy engages and contributes her work every day with all students. She ensures they are learning at appropriate levels so that they are successful. She's engaging, bringing personality and passion to the subjects. Sandy is planning to retire in the spring, and she has contributed so much to the overall climate of Riverwatch. She will be greatly missed when she retires this year, and her shoes will be difficult to fill. So congratulations to Sandy Burns. Thank you.
Next up, we have the consent agenda. Does everybody have time to look that over? Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Darla, second by Tom. All in favor? And that's unanimous. Next, we have public participation. Anything, Sandy?
No.
And how's the public participation? Presentation and discussion. First up, we have the finance report, and tonight we have Steve Ethel coming in for Sarah Hamel.
On the board, does this work or no?
No.
No, okay. On the screen, you can see the monthly financial statement. This is actually for the month of December. Scroll through here. This is the statement of cash receipts and disbursements for the month of December. It's really a statement of sources and uses of cash within our operating account, our operating resources. It includes cash and cash equivalents, which includes money in the checking account plus money that's invested in LGIP. As you can see, we started the month pretty strong, $194 million. I've got to hand it to the tax office. They did a great job of getting money over here in a timely fashion this year, which I always appreciate. There's nothing really unusual about this report for December. Everything looks normal. Intangible taxes, that's one that kind of caught my eye. It's actually tracking about 84% this year, this particular tax. It's my understanding it's based on the amount of debt that's recorded in a real estate transaction, and I suspect that with the reduction of interest rates across the board, we're seeing a lot of refinancings. That's probably where that's coming from. Donations, we appreciate that. I always appreciate that. Everything else is, looks pretty, pretty standard. Payroll, of course, is our biggest expense. Payroll item you see there, those are the net checks, the overhead that's attached to it is in this account's payable figure. So between the beginning balance of $194 million and the ending balance of $181, it looks like we're down about $12, $13 million. That's pretty standard. Through the year, you'll see it decline in balance about $16 million per month. Year-to-date budget report for revenue. This is general fund only. Again, you can see 96% of collections of our taxes have been collected already. That's about 1% ahead of last year. Intangible, there it is, that 88% that I was describing a minute ago, I think that's due to refinancings. Real estate transfers is about 50%, so that, that looks normal. That's about what we projected last year in the budget. TAVT, that's tracking right around 50%. And then QBE, that's the other big one. That's right around what we projected also. This is the year-to-date budget report by function area. Again, this is general fund only. 70.61% of revenues have been collected for the year. Down here, where you see total expenditures is tracking just below 50%. So that's about what we would expect. The big one, instructional, $363 million was budgeted, and we're right at 50%. So wherever instructional goes, that's pretty much where this number's going to be as well, this percentage. Debt services, cash analysis, this tells how much money we have available to service our debt obligations. And it consists of a debt services bank account. This is an account at the bank, a checking account. And then these two investment accounts, this one is in LGIP, and this is money that's invested in treasuries. Total amount, $106 million. Add to that the SPOSS taxes that are collected and the other property taxes and, you know, ad valorem, intangible, real estate transfer taxes. Add to that 4.99 million. Part of this money, it was determined was attributable to SPOSS 4, which is no longer being used to service the debt, so that was transferred over to, to that fund, leaving us with a balance of almost $110 million. And there's a payment coming up into this month, $46, $46 million of debt service. This is a schedule of the investments that are on hand, that are available to the school These are restatements. These to the right, SPOSS 5 and SPOSS 5 Treasuries, these are kind of a restatement of the previous page. And then these others are other monies that are invested at LGIP. The big item is $164 million that was actually transferred out of our checking account, our operating account, over to LGIP. That's the bulk of the tax money that was collected in November. These monies, I think we earn about 6.64%.
0.64%?
0.64. It's gone down a lot. It's gone down a lot. The SPOSS revenues for the month of December came in at 4.131 million. Compare that to last year at this time, 3.47 million. It's actually an increase of 19%.
Incredible.
It is good.
What's going on in the world?
I guess people staying at home, eating meals here in this area, people that are working out of their house, you know, they're not eating lunch in Atlanta anymore, you know, for instance. That's my theory.
Keep it up.
And school activities, nothing really unusual here, except this amount at Hall Creek. They had to refund some field trips, and for some reason, the My Payments Plus service did not draw a $28,000 refund from Hall Creek, so we did it for them, and it was posted to their revenue. So that's why that looks unusual. But if you tack on $28,000 to this, their revenue otherwise would be $10 million, $10,000, they wish it was $10 million, $10,000, which is normal for Hall Creek. So that looks unusual. I know what that is, though. And then for the middle and high schools, there's nothing unusual in these. And then this is the graph of the money by high school, middle school, elementary school. Middle schools always seem to lag behind. And that's it, if y'all, unless y'all have any questions.
No questions?
Thank you for your attention.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Here comes the man with the pretty pictures. Mr. Wenning with a construction update.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you.
Starting to come together.
Yeah, so fortunately, all of our projects are extremely well-positioned for summer openings. As you can see, this is East Forsyth High School. The exterior envelope is substantially complete. You see a lot of the landscaping, paving now done. Since the photo was taken just last week, all the paving is striped now, signage begun. This is the backside. You see the three tennis courts. Sports lighting was asked last month, right? So all the sports lighting is in now. The sub-base for the multipurpose field, right? So this will be practice and multipurpose. The turf is currently finishing on the football field, and we'll be turfing that next week. So this is the backside of the property. You see the softball field, the baseball field, all complete, significant septic area. Football is exciting to see the sports coming together, so the turf is coming down. Moving a little bit to the interior or half, this is the courtyard, right? So this was developed further than Denmark, which is a really great, secure space, but yet being outdoors. So the school gets the best of both. You really see a lot of public assembly, those type activities. This is a nice developed space for the school. Just taking you through a couple of the interior photos. You know, we all look at kind of the finished product, aesthetics, but the complexity and so much goes in the ceilings and walls that nobody sees, so this is the service corridor of all the mechanical equipment. Basketball coming together, we've got the flooring down. Our food court cafeteria coming together, finishing up. And some of the school spirit you see in the bronco colors. Probably at this point, I should say too, you know, all of the stakeholders, Jeff Chaney involved very early on in the process, Drew at ACE, Cheryl Riddle at Hendrix. We've got a smooth transition from finishing construction, going into commissioning, FF&amp;E, and opening the school. So everybody's starting to get excited now. You start, start seeing it come together. So moving to another project, this is ACE. As you can see, the exterior envelope is substantially complete now from the side view, the front view, and this is an interior shot of what will be the cafeteria. So same kind of thing, you see the elaborate work in the ceilings, all that's getting covered up. Floor finishes will begin next week at ACE. So similar to East Forsyth High School, ACE finishes with a certificate of occupancy approximately April 1st. Performing Arts Center, a front view, the exterior envelope is now substantially complete, dried in, allowing a lot of the interior finishes to take place. We've got a 60-foot scaffolding erected throughout the interior of that. So again, PAC Focal will be opening fall of next year, not one of the summer scheduled openings, proceeding well. Out at Hendrix, you see, similar to the photos at East Forsyth High, the exterior envelope is complete, the playing field's complete, paving, parking up top, all complete, working in interior finishes. Similarly, you see a lot of the mechanical rooms that, you know, aesthetics, gymnasium coming together, Cheryl's basketball, that's pretty focused, so we pay close attention to that to keep her happy. Moving to New Hope Elementary School, you know, and this picture really doesn't do it justice, right? We cut and filled 300,000 cubic yards to give you orientation. We were here for the groundbreaking. So this 30-foot retaining wall for the site is now complete. That allowed a 30-foot fill in this area and a 30-foot cut here, the critical path being the building pad. So fortunately, now we are to grade and have begun foundations, which is the critical component. You know, behind the scenes, structural steel is being designed, engineered, fabricated. So synchronizing the foundations being complete around the first week of March, steel will arrive the first week in March, and that's when you really see the project starting to come out of the ground. We have worked through the challenges of rocks successfully. And we always begin with the end in mind, you know, especially with COVID and supply chain logistics, you've really, you can't trip anywhere given our, given our schedules. So Laura Webb, principal, just so excited, early involvement, Jennifer, design team, Greg, Pruitt did a phenomenal job. You see the, the natural colors is what the color board and the color scheme will be. The greens, the wood grain panels for the exterior. On the interior, you see a lot of the natural blues and greens. So I show you that to, you know, also say all of those interior elements are already being procured, and that happens all behind the scenes to make sure that we open it tight.
Just curious, that exterior wood grain, is that seen in that product?
Uh, no, metal. Metal panels.
Okay. Interesting.
So, and this is again, something new for us, not the prototype, so we're doing some different things. So looking ahead, we also have six construction projects ranging from a lot of CTAE, that is a typo, it should read South Forsyth High School Turf Maintenance Building. And when we say the hill and ACE Center Office renovations, right, we're referring to 1130, 1140, which was, you know, currently ACE, won't be. So that's what we'll be doing. All of these are in various stages of finalizing design and procurement. Any questions on the program?
That's good. Good job.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next is the calendar timeline for 22, 2022, 23.
It's kind of hard to say. At this point, it's kind of a little bit hard to imagine, but needless to say, that's just year after next. So as you all, as y'all well know that, I can pull it up here too, I'm sorry. So you approve a calendar actually two years out, so I know you know that, but so that's, so this is for the 22, 23 school year, so this is just the communication, timeline and communication plan. So as always, we'll give a draft that we, that we always start with to local school councils, so as we get, we let them look at that and give us input first to the draft that we present to you all. So we get, we always get input from local school councils, you can see there, that we're in the, in the process of that. Then we will present the draft, I will present a draft for this school year to cabinet and principals, just to let them see it. They know that, that it's just for them to see, that it's not anything that they put out. And then, but officially is presented to you as a board at your meeting on February the 9th. And then at that point, we'll post it on the web for public input. So that'll be posted on the web after your meeting on the 10th, and we'll receive input up until March the 1st. And then I'll take the input, go through it, look at it, summarize it, and then see if there needs to be any revisions based on the input, make those revisions if necessary, and then come back and present you a calendar for, a student calendar for this year at your meeting on March the 9th. And then they give you a week to look at it. If you have questions, certainly you could contact me, email me, whatever. And then present it back to you at your regular board meeting on March the 16th for your final approval for the 22, 23 school calendar. So that's the timeline for the 22, 23 student calendar.
So we did the two-year, just to get on the cycle, and now it's going to be one year every two years out?
That's correct, yes.
Any questions on the timeline? Same procedure, we've been using for years.
Yep, you're right. Thank you.
Next up, external items is EOC weight with Leanne Rice and the other board.
Well, we are here this evening to present to you a recommendation for how we want to weight our end-of-course test for high school. This is going to address the governance team's goals. Goal one, which is safety for students and staff, and also goal two, which is teaching the whole child. Just to give you a little background on the end-of-course test, our EOCs help us measure how students are doing with certain high school courses and the state standards. They are required by federal law. Last year, we did not administer the EOCs. We had a waiver because of the pandemic, and so we did not have to administer any of the EOCs in the 1920 school year. This school year, when we started, the Georgia General Assembly and the State Department of Ed reduced our EOC tests. We used to give eight tests, now we just give four. So there's one in each of the core subject areas, and you can see on here, we give Biology, Algebra I, US History, and American Literature. For this school year, there's been lots of discussion about what we're going to do. Georgia applied for another federal waiver. We were denied by the US Department of Education, but we have filed a second waiver. With a new administration coming in, Georgia wanted to file and was encouraged to file with the new Secretary of Education. So we're kind of on hold, waiting to see what happens from, from the federal government. But without that, we are anticipating having to give EOCs and EOGs this year, because that is part of our federal mandate. With that in mind, our state superintendent had made a recommendation to our state board that the EOCs not count the typical 20%. Normally, our EOC test scores will count 20% of a student's course grade in those courses, but he had asked, and the board approved, the state board approved, for those tests to carry a .01 percentage weight. Now, what the state board did say was that's a minimum, and that the local boards have the option to determine what the course weight would be for each of those exams. And so that's why we're here today. We want to talk about that and see what the best decision for Forsyth County would be. While I agree that there are many districts across our state that are, that are impacted very heavily by coronavirus and the pandemic, I think Forsyth County is one of the few districts that's been able to come back to school and to do, continue instruction. And so I think there's some things for us to consider with this. As you can imagine, we've heard from quite a few stakeholders about their opinion whether or not the EOC course should carry weight or not, and those opinions vary greatly. We have some families who feel very strongly that the course weight shouldn't count at all, that their students are very anxious and very worried, that there's a lot of things going on in their lives, and testing is not the most important thing. We also have some families who feel like the EOC test scores help their students, and those test scores really do help improve the course average. So what I have here for you is looking at, two years ago, our EOC course results, course test results, because we didn't have results from last year, but to show you the difference in Forsyth County and Georgia. And you can see that our district very much exceeds the state average. And when you look at the four subjects that we'll be giving EOCs for this year, American Literature, Algebra I, Biology, and US History, our district average is in the mid to high 80s on that, where our state average is in the mid 70s up to the, up to 80. So in some cases, we're 11 points higher than the state where our students perform. And in speaking to many students, they've talked about, they really do count on these EOC scores to help bring their averages up. With an average of, say, 88 in Algebra I or Biology, that's meaning a lot of our students are making As, equivalent of As on their EOC course test. In addition, as you look at the instruction, as I said, we're one of the few schools who's been able to be face-to-face and offer options to our families. You all were gracious enough to grant us an additional five days of pre-planning, where we helped teachers plan for instruction, whether they were teaching in a virtual setting or a face-to-face setting. In addition, we have worked very diligently with Forsyth Virtual Academy, with the teaching and learning content specialists, and the teachers teaching both virtual and face-to-face settings to build curriculum, to look and make sure that our instruction is consistent and equivalent and equitable, no matter which environment a student is in. And so what I'd love to do is let Heather talk to you a little bit about what that's looking like at the building perspective, how we've been able to work through instructional things.
Now, when I go to the next slide. Good evening. So as, as Leanne shared, we have coming to talk about EOCs, and from a school perspective, from a high school principal perspective, despite the challenges that we have had this year, we really feel positive about the level of instruction that our teachers have been able to maintain this school year. Having the additional pre-planning days really gave our teachers time to get in, to get a lot more technology under their belt, and these are things that we've had all along, but without a reason to use it. Sometimes if you're not comfortable, you're not going to. And this year has forced all of our teachers to do things that they haven't done in the past, that I truly believe moving forward, they're going to continue to use. But we have been fortunate to stay face-to-face for most of that time. And one of the key features that I'd like to bring out is that although we have had to have sometimes where either an individual school, like Lambert or Denmark, early in the, in the mid-fall, and then all of the high schools right before the holidays, all went virtual, we really feel that our students did not miss a beat. One of the features that we were able to put in place when the whole school went virtual was the synchronous component, where we could say to our students, your class starts at 8:25, whether it's first period or second period, make sure that you're online. And our teachers reported some of the highest attendance rates that they had had all year, even with face-to-face students. So they were very encouraged by that. We have many parents who felt like their students being able to have that connection with their teacher, to be able to ask the questions, to be able to actually see the faces of their students, and vice versa, really helped. So we feel, I mentioned this just to say, that we don't feel that it has hurt our students this year, that we feel like they're still on par and learning as we would hope that they would be learning. Now, that's not to say that we don't have some students that are struggling. We have some full-time virtual students that have, they have not come back to school because their parents are still not comfortable with the environment and the threat of COVID. But we also have a lot of students that came back to us. Their parents were like, they really need that interaction with teachers and classmates, but some of them came back to us behind. And some of our in-person students, of course, were, we have some of those that are always going to be behind. So every high school has set up opportunities for students to remediate lost instruction from first semester, whether they're doing before or after-school help sessions. Most of us, I think all of us, have what we refer to this semester as zero period, where students are able to go in and recover some of the credit that they did not earn first semester, so that they did go into second semester with a failing grade first semester, they could recover that credit up to a 70, which puts them on an even playing field, and they're able, having a strong semester, to be able to do well. We have a lot of students that are doing the hybrid schedule, and we have had high participation with the activities that we have going on. So one of the data pieces that we wanted to share with you goes back to our fall PSAT participation. We were worried about what that was going to look like, but we had the option of our PSAT day being a virtual learning day, so that the only students that we had in the building were the students who were testing. That was good, because we were able to have smaller test rooms, with it allowed for more social distancing. We were able to amp up our safety protocols, and as a result, many of our students came to school, even if they were virtual, to take that test. And one of the, the 10th grade row is the row that I really think is important to take a look at, because our 10th graders, the state pays for all of them to take the test, so they're all signed up to take the test. And you can see our percentages across the board, and we were, we were very encouraged that even those students might have been virtual, their parents felt comfortable enough with them coming into the building to test, and we feel like our data supports that fact. And this is a combination of our face-to-face students and virtual students at the same time. So we, are you doing this slide? Is this you, or is this me? I think you're making the actual proposal.
So when I said at the beginning, this addresses directly two of your governance goals, and one is the whole child, and one is school safety. And so what we'd like to propose is that the EOC would carry a 10% weight instead of the normal 20%, but we would only count it if that score helps the student's grade. We want to show compassion, we want to show understanding for different situations that families are going through, but we also feel like if we are, if we have to give the test, if the federal government says we do, then we want it to be worth our time. We want it to be meaningful, and we want to see where our students are. We want to use this data to help us as we go into the year next year, to know where some of our gaps are, and to help teachers as they're, as they're teaching that next curriculum in there. But we also understand that there are some students who still may not come in a building, and this test is not available in a remote setting. Students have to come into the building to take their EOC. So we want to honor those situations as well. The other recommendation that we'd like to make is that the five days of the EOC test dates, we'd like for those to be online learning days. We'd like for only the students who are taking an EOC to come into the building. We saw great success with that, with the PSAT. I think our families felt comfortable with the safety environment, the safety protocols that we put in place. We were able to spread students out more, we were able to utilize more staff to help with the testing, testing as proctors. And so this would allow for us to be able to offer the test, but also carry on instruction with those students who are not taking an EOC. We are working on our calendar right now, and Susan Norris, our testing coordinator, met with high school's test coordinators last week. And what we're proposing is that that first week in May, May 3rd through the 7th, we would do our EOCs, and we would have online learning days for all of the high school students, and only those students who had an EOC on that particular day would come into the building. We would run transportation as normal, meals as normal, students who needed to come to school or wanted to come to school would be welcome, and we would have places for them in the building if they wanted to learn remotely, but from a school classroom, any of those kind of things, we would make that available. kinds of things, we would make that available. So that is our recommendation. We are formally requesting that Dr. Bearden make this recommendation to the board, but there are two parts to it. And so again, we'd like the EOC scores in algebra one, biology, US history, and American literature to count as 10% of the student's final score, if it is helpful to that student. And if not, then it would count as .01%. And then we'd also like those five main administration days to be online learning days for our high school students.
Thank you, Leanne. I'd recommend approval on both.
Should we do those?
You can, if you want to. I'll recommend approval on EOCs being 10% of student's final grade if it increases the student's final grade.
Is there a motion to that?
Salute.
Motion by Tom?
Second.
Second by Darla. Is there any questions or?
Will, will it still count if, if the second waiver is approved with the, with the new administration?
That's a great question.
We're going to go with it.
Yes. If, if the waiver comes through from the federal government and they waive testing, then we wouldn't give the EOCs at all. So this is if we don't get the waiver approved and we still have to continue with our EOC testing, then we want to be able to offer these, this kind of conditional opportunity.
Wouldn't we still want the data though from the EOCs just to know where they're at? Wouldn't that still be helpful to have?
It would. I think it would rest on our Department of Education and whether they offer the EOCs to be given. Like last year, they did not. It wasn't an option for us. They were waived altogether. So we would rely on guidance from our assessment department at the state.
I have a question. Just on the data analysis, how did you pull the, the data together? You said you pulled information from stakeholders?
Oh, as far as a different input?
Yes.
Just with parents who've called, different meetings I've been at, principals have talked to students. My own children are in 11th grade, so I have a nice sample of students who are taking both US history and, US history and American lit. Thank you.
Just you had like had.
Yes. It was informal discussions, but I've taken a lot of phone calls from parents about testing and wanting to know more information about it and whether or not it counts. When the survey went out with the state, we had a lot of feedback in our community about whether or not it should count. And many were very vocal on both ends, that it should count or it shouldn't count. So we felt like this proposal really addresses both groups of people, whether they wanted it to count or did not want it to count.
Yeah, no, I love, I mean, I love the flexibility. I was, I was a proponent of, you know, the superintendent when he came out and.
Stick to the.
Yeah, and he said, you know, he made the proposal of the board when he was like, I want .01, you know. Initially, I was like, that's great, you know, taking care of the wellness and looking at kind of teaching the whole child, like, you know, as a whole. And I love what you're doing here is, is you're kind of taking into account, you know, both aspects of looking at, you know, looking at the students as, you know, look at those students who are, you know, want more continued challenging and, you know, look at the student that wants to increase their score and, and that. And then also, you know, almost like the whole harmless.
Right.
You know, want to keep that provision going.
Yeah.
You know, tests, they are causing anxiety for lots of our students still. So I love the flexibility and, and the choice that you're giving. So thank you for doing that.
One question I have is that with it limiting to these four subjects, does that mean that a majority of the students would not have to take EOC since it's just those four or?
That is true. Your 11th graders would be the ones most impacted because your 11th grad, most of your 11th graders are taking American lit and US history. Freshmen, most freshmen are taking biology and some eighth and ninth graders take algebra one. So your seniors are not generally taking these EOCs. They've already taken them. But I will say too, that first week of May, when we're doing these EOCs and the next week, which we would use as makeups for the EOCs, are also our AP testing dates. And so that's where many of our seniors are taking a lot of those AP exams as well. And so what we've done is we've aligned our EOC testing with the AP, so students wouldn't be taking an EOC exam and a corresponding AP exam on the same day. For example, we are scheduled to give the US history EOC on a Thursday. I think it's May 6th. That's also is the same date that the AP US history exam is given. So pretty much every junior would be taking either the EOC for US history or the AP US history exam. And then any students, we've looked to make sure that if there was a, an EOC that might line up with an AP exam, they're not on the same day.
So Heather, if you're taking AP lit, you don't take the lit EOC? That was a question I've been hearing from.
Yeah. And that was a change that they've made. Originally, they said you would have to take both if you were taking AP, the American lit.
Igloos.
Yeah, that you would have to take that. But they have waived students from taking the EOC for American lit if they're taking AP Lang.
Same with Igloos as well.
Yes. 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 And I think that's been a, a valiant effort for our state board and our Department of Education to, to think about testing and try to reduce the unnecessary testing.
I heard, heard some questions from students and teachers and 11th graders.
Yeah. Well, and we are, to be fully transparent, we are still waiting on a middle school waiver. Right now, our eighth graders that are in algebra one are scheduled to take both the eighth grade math EOG as well as the algebra one EOC. But we have submitted another waiver, our state has submitted that waiver to say that's double testing. And in the past, they've approved that where students haven't had to take both of those exams. We feel very confident that'll be approved.
So if we, if we do get the waiver approved with the new administration, are you just not going to give the EOC?
We would have to rely on our State Department of Education. They would let us know whether they're administering this or not.
Okay.
I would assume no, that they would not.
We just wouldn't count it into the grade, it would still be given.
I think, I don't know if they would still give it if it's been waived altogether. And that would be a state level decision.
But that's a cost, right? They have to pay for the exam, right? That's something, okay. That's, that's part, okay.
Yeah. But we will certainly keep you updated on that.
And so if the normal threshold or the typical threshold is 20%, then why the 10% here? Is that just because the state board said 10%?
No.
Well, the state said 1%.
The state said .01.
Well, I know. Initially, they said 10% and then they agreed to .01%.
Right. That is certainly a decision that you all can make.
I just wondered.
Well, high, high school principals met and talked about it as a group and were, and were united on the 10% recommendation.
It's a nice compromise.
And one of the reasons why is that, as was stated earlier, our students have typically relied on the 20%, especially students who have taken the challenge to take AP classes. And maybe they're hovering at a high B, but they're working really hard. They take the EOC. If they make an A, it bumps them up. So we've still felt that to, also to encourage our kids to come and actually take the test, that if it had some incentive in their grade and they're very motivated by that.
Would that be good or?
Yeah, I think so. I think so. And I think the other thing, if you look at students who have a, a average, can opt out of the EOC going into it, correct?
We don't opt out, you can't opt out of the EOC, but they, they usually opt out of their final exam.
That's.
Yeah.
Isn't there something to be said in Forsyth County? I think, like you said, we've been able to be in person or in your choice since the beating of school. And I, I think we have a high level of education in Forsyth County. And I think having the EOC to compare us to other systems and show, when kids go to do their college application, I think they'll be able to look at Forsyth County and say the A that that student had, or the B or whatever throughout the school year, and then they take the EOC. If that's, you know, so Stan Shakes with the A that they're getting at school in Lambert or at West or anywhere in Forsyth County is.
It's a good validation.
If they're getting an A in another school, it might not have been doing the same caliber of education. It validates the grade of the A here versus maybe somewhere else if the EOC, it comes in at the same level. So to me, I think it's, it's going to prove how hard our kids are working and how hard our teachers are working. I think it's, I think it's worth having that score in there. I think the 10% is a rank compromise.
Yeah, but to that point also, if it's not included in there because we get a waiver or something, we also know that the grade that students getting is based on the standards which are given in the EOCs. Does that make sense? Where their level of proficiency in that standard has been reached based on the grade without the EOC. You following me? Is that complicated? I see it in my head.
Any other, I think it's good. I think it's good. Any other questions, concerns? All right. All in favor?
This is in part two. I would recommend we allow the five main administrative days for EOCs to be online learning days for high school students not taking any, any EOC.
Motion by Darla?
Second.
Second by Tom. Any discussion?
And I expect this also would probably be reversed if we get the waiver and don't have to give those.
Yes. Then we wouldn't need the online learning days, correct.
Again, the students who are not taking the test could, if they needed to be, remain in school if their parents wanted them to, or they needed access, they could still come to school and have reasonable access to do something of value if needed to be.
Yes.
And we've already tried this and it worked well.
Yes. Yeah, the PSAT day, I think, was a great success.
Well, you're knocking out several things that week. The UFCs, the APs.
Yes, AP tests are that week as well.
So we're just, we're making the environment better for the students for success.
And also what we've heard the last few years, it's nice that we, by doing this, we're being very clear to parents, what, what's going on these days. It's always professional parents and stuff. They don't really know what's going on. And this is just really spelling out, do I have to send the kid? Do I don't have to send the kid? The parents really like knowing what's going on. So this, that communication really helps with parents. All right. All in favor? That is unanimous as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Next up, we have elections of officers for 2021. I'll read off the slate and we'll just vote on the slate. All right, we've met, we chatted earlier. So I'll read off the whole slate and then we'll make a motion. For this coming year, we'll have for Chair Kristen Morrissey, for Vice Chair Wes McCall, the Legislative Liaison, Lindsay Adams. For the chamber, we have Wes McCall, the GSBA delegate Darla White. Drug Council is Tom Cleveland. Attendance Protocol is Lindsay Adams. And the youth, homeless youth council is Wes McCall. Is there a motion to approve this slate as listed?
Salute.
Motion by Darla, I think.
You should say Wes because he never.
That's fine.
All right. Well, okay. I think it was motion by Darla, second by Tom. Any discussion questions? All in favor? That is unanimous. Next, we have points of information.
Nothing to add.
And committee reports, it's not really yet. Wes, you were the first chamber meeting.
We did. We had our first chamber meeting this morning. Mr. Morrissey and I attended it and it went really well. And look forward to working with that group and really connecting. And I, I give them kudos for evolving the school system and facilitating the, the economic growth in Forsyth County. Because like Dr. Bearden has always said, schools are the hub of the community. And so they, they recognize that and they, they involve us. So it was a very, what was it, two hour meeting?
It was two hour.
It was good.
Yeah, we, we did get interviewed by Carol Lindbergh, our new representative. That was interesting. And so it's going to be a good year. All right. Is there a motion to go into executive session for personnel and land as per the affidavit?
Salute.
Second.
Motion by Tom, second by Darla. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you all.